In closed session, we are now back to take action on some closed session matters, if you would be so kind.
Do you want me to?
You have to read the closed session. We don't need to call the roll, we're already convened.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was under the impression we were calling the roll. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the personnel packet as presented and discussed during the August 10, 2021 closed session meeting. I need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second, Ms. Gasco.
Ms. Gasco?
Yes.
Ms. Gasco?
Yes.
First one?
Yes.
Third one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so before I dismiss Mr. Fisher, everybody's Chromebooks working, everybody in a good place?
Hang on, I'm not in yet.
Got your agendas open, or your packets open? Third tab, right, Mr. Fisher?
Yep, in Google Docs.
They used to be saved on the hard drive. They used to be downloaded and saved on the hard drive.
Dave's switching it up.
Dave, do you want to show her where, Dave?
I don't know how to switch, but whatever.
I just log in and do it that way, which always puts me out of line with everyone else's.
It just kind of, every once in a while it's nice if something's not in.
Well, now it doesn't matter. Before it was like local, when it was in the folder. So you did lose internet?
Because the internet goes in and out.
And now you can just kind of look for it.
Dave, so if we lost internet, would they lose their tab?
No. I mean, we wouldn't be able to open the other one, so.
Yes. I like it when you download them and just save hard copies, so that's just my.
Noted.
Okay, so we're going to start the, you guys all set? I'm going to start reading about the public hearing while you guys are getting situated.
When that ratio comes by and we lose.
So, a quorum being present, the first order of business is to hold a public hearing on SER III grant spending and continuity of services plan. Due notice has been given of the public hearing on this item and all other statutory requirements preliminary to the holding of such public hearing have been complied with. Information on SER III has been presented at previous meetings. Dr. Smetana has provided agenda, information, excuse me, in the agenda packet and will present this to the public today. Dr. Smetana, would you mind?
Yes. So, the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, also known as R-SER III funds, provides school districts with emergency relief funds to address the impact that COVID has had, continues to have on schools. RB has been allocated $1,022,288 with additional monies required for state set-asides for learning loss, summer enrichment, and after-school programs. That piece has come to light since the last time the administration has reported out to the Board in regarding SER funding. One of the grant requirements is to make the appropriation of grant funds and the continuity of services plan available for the public comment. This requirement was completed at the June 28 Board meeting and was also posted on the district's website, but since that meeting with the additional set-asides, it caused us to reallocate how we were spending some of the funds because we received additional money. So, the updated spending plan for SER III grant funds is on Board Book Page 5. You'll see at the very bottom of Page 5 is where the additional money came in. So, in addition to the roughly a little over a million dollars that we receive, or we will receive, we also will receive $117,421. As you can see, the state requires that we set aside $83,943 for learning loss. For us, we will be allocating that money towards the school psychol, the additional school psychologist for this upcoming school year. As a result, that freed up some additional money that we were initially planning to spend out of SER III that we've reallocated to paraprofessionals. Additionally, we had some additional money set aside solely for the purpose of summer enrichment, so we'll be using $16,789 for summer school and the extended school year next summer for our students, as well as same amount for after-school programming. Homework hangout, which Mrs. Lindquist has presented previously in the past, as well as SAT prep for juniors, and then Mr. Mannan is working on having a parent and student speaking series this year on social-emotional related topics and mental health. So, we have added that as after-school activities as well. So, those are the changes that have been made since June 28. And then additionally, in the board packet tonight for the hearing, I provided some information that was shared out with RB families and also posted online in regards to the continuum of services that have been previously presented at the June meeting. It's presented in more of a summary format in regards to academics and SEL.
All good. So, I want to say a couple things. Thank you very much for working through this grant and the application and the deadlines. I do think Ms. Lindquist's document that was shared with us, and as a parent, I think was exceptionally well done to understand where the school is heading for the upcoming year. We can now have public discussion on this, and we can open up to for visitor comments, of which I don't see anyone here in the audience, but I will look around. Does anyone else have any comments to make on the SER III funding? Okay. Seeing there are no further comments from the public, I now declare the public hearing on the SER III grant spending and continuity of services plan completed, and the regular meeting can proceed.
Recognitions, I do not have any recognitions for the August Board meeting.
I don't think we have any additional visitor statements that have come in at this point. Discussion items, Dr. Skinkis.
For a request, we received one, and that was requesting information in regards to copiers, printers, multi-function devices, and that was emailed on July 14. Discussion, district goal-setting is an agenda item that the Board, I anticipate, will begin working on probably early fall, as soon as we pass the budget and get into the school year.
Well, and I will raise, I think, one issue that Ms. Ruska had brought up, and I know some of us have RSVP'd for the IASB seminar on the Thanksgiving holiday. There is, was it a half-day seminar?
It's a half-day seminar on setting goals that match up to your mission and vision statement.
It sounded spot-on to where we're heading.
Yeah, it's really good.
So, I really think if we could all make at least that session, that would be a productive use of people's time, and I know we're looking to RSVP to.
Ms. Nardi.
Ms. Nardi, as soon as possible, so.
So, definitely.
If you can make it.
Friends coming with.
Yes, I know some Board members had a conflict.
I told you I wanted to make sure we.
I can make every effort, but I.
Okay. I just wanted to put it out there, since it's been kind of on our tickler list, if you will, it's a good chance to bring it up again. You know, with the pending vacancy, we've gotten a little bit delayed in some of our board work, but goal-setting certainly is on the agenda for this fall, so we all need to be prepared for that.
We'll look at, maybe we can make the timing work, if it's like a half a day or something? I don't know, I'm just putting it out there.
I think the problem is that he has to register for $500 to attend a half-session, so.
So, just.
I think if we can get two or three Board members there, you know, we could bring the packet back.
Just, so Board members, no, it's Friday, it's afternoon or morning, it's a half-day workshop, it's about two, three hours, you get a nice little take-home booklet workshop. The presenters have done this.
Or is that one of the workshops, though, that we have to make sure Marian signs us up for before the conference?
Yes, we want to sign up ASAP because it'll fill up.
Okay, so can you include that in your Friday update? Because I think when I, when I RSVP'd to Marian, I didn't have specifically reference
You can just go to that and not the conference, or vice versa, or you could vote.
It sounds like maybe in our Friday update packet, we'll get some specific information on that distributed, and then if everyone could commit in the very near future, I think we'll be in a better place.
Yes.
That tracks with the IASB work, with the board evaluation. Special Committee, we can, I believe we can now take off of here. We did meet, that was the SER hearing, that satisfied some of that process earlier this summer, and obviously, Dr. Skinkis will be referencing how school starts next week. And then communication strategies, I like to keep this on here, I think we've had some discussions, and it's something we need to have a more robust discussion around. I just don't think tonight is necessarily something we're prepared for, and it probably dovetails in many ways into our goal-setting discussion, but again, open to comments tonight, or we can move on in the interest of time. Any additional discussion items? To add to the agenda? Larena snuck around the corner there, I can't see her as well, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
Report?
Yes. Do you want me to introduce the student advisors, or do you want to do that?
I'll do that, if you can. If you're from the, I do it.
Okay, I'll, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, you do it, thank you.
So, there's no president's report?
There's no president's report.
No president's report. Okay, so tonight, we have with us Elena Pinedo and Claire Harrison. They were selected in the process to become the student advisors for the 2021-2022 school year. They will have, they don't have a report tonight, so I wanted to provide them an opportunity to introduce themselves to the rest of the Board and talk about what they expect to get out of this experience. So, Elena, would you like to go first?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Elena Pinedo. I'm a senior here, and I transferred in from Fenwick my junior year. I play varsity softball, and I'm also a part of the Olas and Best Buddies Club here at RB, and I really hope to just be an effective bridge between the student body and the Board of Education, and to just be a strong voice that helps represent all of the students at RB, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Elena. Welcome. Claire?
Okay, mine's a little longer. I would like to begin by thanking everyone who has helped me to get where I'm sitting today, from my elementary school teachers who taught me that everyone has a voice and deserves to be heard, to my parents who instilled in me from a young age to pay attention to the community around me. Thank you. If we haven't met, hello, my name is Claire Harrison. I will be a senior this year at RB, and I am honored to serve as one of the two student voices on the Board this year. Outside of the classroom, I lead our marching band as one of two drum majors, stage manage our theater productions, and coordinate the lessons program for our chapter of Modern Music Masters. Additionally, I serve as the Secretary General for Model United Nations and the Director of Service for RB's National Honor Society Chapter. This Monday, for the first time in almost 17 months, all RB students will walk into the building together to commence in a new year. These 17 months have been significantly tougher on some than others. Some people in the community lost family members, lost jobs, and so much more. To these people, I applaud your strength and continued perseverance. After all this time apart and isolated, we will be together again. Many people, including myself, have not attended an in-person class since March of 2020. As crazy as to say, I walked out of my last class as a sophomore and will walk back in as a senior. Whatever your situation was during the previous academic year, this re-entry to the classroom represents a fresh start for all of us. I am incredibly excited to learn face-to-face full-time and to interact with my peers once again, since it is now safe to do so. Let us take this opportunity of a clean state to get back to business and to push ourselves. I look forward to seeing everyone on Monday. Thank you.
Are you going, Claire?
I will jump in quickly, would you mind? So, thank you both, and I should have prefaced this a bit more, we talked about it at a prior meeting. We had some incredibly impressive candidates. You know, we went through the interview process with former Board Member Tom Jacobs and myself, and we're so happy that you both have joined us and are representing such a variety of backgrounds here. So, as we move forward, we will make sure we associate with some Board Member mentorship for you to understand the Board process and what work we actually do have before us, and so we want this to be a dialogue, and we want this to be an engagement from what you see through your lens and how you can bring that to the larger community. So, that's all I wanted to say. So, thank you very much for being here this evening.
You're welcome.
Anyone else yet? And welcome, absolutely. Okay. Moving on to the rest of your superintendent's.
Superintendent's report, 2122 school year. Communication has been sent out to all stakeholders regarding the full return of in-person learning. On Thursday, August 12, the faculty and staff report for the opening institute day and students report on Monday, August 16. The COVID-19 prevention strategies that will be implemented align with the CDC, IDPH, and Cook County Department of Public Health. Masks are required on all school-related transportation and should be worn by all individuals inside years two years of age and older, regardless of vaccination status, and this aligns with Governor Pritzker's executive order that came out last week. Curriculum advisory, there is no update. Facilities Advisory Council, summer work is wrapping up, the school is ready for the return of the students and staff. Major projects, including the pool UV system, life safety handrails and railings, the main and district office flooring, and the bookstore have been completed. Finance Advisory Council, Dr. Smetana is making minor updates to align the district's budget with grants and any other adjustments that need to be made for the upcoming school year. Budget hearing is scheduled for September, at the September Business Meeting. Personnel Advisory Staffing is completed for the upcoming school year. New teacher orientation was yesterday and today. The building administration is working on a few stipend positions, and an update will be provided, was provided during closed session with those stipend positions. Policy Advisory Council, in your packet tonight, you'll see Press Packet 107. If 6:185 is included, there is no action to be taken on 6:185, and edits were provided for you to review on Packet 107, and that was Ms. Towner and Ms. Ruska and I met on, I believe, July 26. Purchase, sale, or lease of land, no update on this project, this is tabled for future discussions. And that's all I have for.
Are you handling the?
Superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Smetana, Assistant Superintendent's report.
Good evening. My reports tonight will provide the Board of Education with financial information for the month of July. So, beginning on Board Book Page 21, you'll see the monthly summary report that shows the total operating revenue for the month, with $785,511, with 56% coming from federal and state reimbursements, 19% coming from summer camp and student fees, and 13% coming from CPPRT. A lot of that revenue coming from state and federal reimbursements were grants from last fiscal year, and we got reimbursed in July. The total operating expenditures for the month were $3,269,876, with 48% towards salary and benefits, and 42% towards operations and maintenance, primarily the yearly contract with Airmark. We do receive a discount if we pay it in one lump sum in July, which is why we do so, and 4% towards building supplies. On Board Book Page 23, you can see the summary of operating revenue, shows that the district has received 2.8% of our revenue for the year, and this amount is lower than last fiscal year at this time, but one month into the budget, it's not really much to be concerned about at this point. And then, on the next page, the summary of operating revenues, or sorry, expenditures shows that the district has spent 11.8% of the budgeted expenditures. This amount is also lower than last fiscal year at this time, which was 13%. As always, for information, I included the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month. This normally compares budget to actual for each account. This month, the budgeted amounts had not been updated in the financial system yet, as many changes were needed. That was done after running these reports, so it will be accurate next month, but the revenues and expenditures are accurate for the month. And then also, Student Activity Account Summary, as always, keep in mind that negative account balances do represent positive fund balances for those accounts. Additionally, this month, on Board Book Page 45, I've included the Paid Building Rental Report for a fourth quarter and fiscal year 21. So, that includes all revenues and expenditures from April 1, 2021, through June 30, 2021, in regards to rentals that have paid their invoices. This quarter's revenue was $4,779, which was due to renting the Aquatic Center, and if you scroll through the report, you'll see that all of our revenue from rentals this year has been solely from renting the Aquatic Center. Due to COVID, that was one space we were easily able to rent out when it was safe to do so. So, you can see that this year, year-to-date revenue was $20,794.60, and expenditures were $1,802, resulting in a surplus of almost $19,000. This surplus is used to offset maintenance of the facilities. A prime example of this is in the pool, we just spent $45,000 to fix and replace the pool UV system. So, that's what we use this surplus money for. The surplus is significantly lower than the previous fiscal year, which was $60,000, well, $60,211.25. Obviously, due to COVID, we were not able to rent out the facility like we normally did, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Quick question, Dr. Smetana. What do you anticipate will be the impact with the delay in property tax receipts?
I don't, I don't have an estimate in regards to that. We're still waiting for the Township Treasurer to receive last year's financial report, and then actually, they've received it, but actually adjusting it, and then using that. Moving forward will give us a good estimate in general on property tax, but, you know, I think it's important that we have, continue to have a surplus so that when property taxes are delayed, we can dip into that surplus.
Into the fund balance.
Into the fund balance, correct. So, I am not, given that we have a fund balance, I'm confident that that will be able to hold us over until we do receive all of the property tax.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any questions? Thank you very much. Would you mind doing that?
I will cover the principal's report. Dr. Freitas and his wife Evelyn gave birth to a healthy baby boy over the weekend, Romeo Julian Freitas, eight pounds, 10 ounces. Mrs. Freitas and baby Romeo are doing well, and everybody's at home and recovering. So, Dr. Freitas will be here Thursday for the opening institute, and he's planning on trying to come in for an administrative meeting tomorrow, so he's balancing a little bit extra right now. So, I'll cover briefly his principal's report, I already touched on the opening institutes, the Bulldog Return to Learn Plan, that's the plan that Ms. Salus referenced, that Ms. Lindquist helped create. That went out to all the families last week, and I think that was a great document that summarized the different strategies and things that we'll be putting in place as we expect students back for a full return to a new school year. All the seniors enrolled in summer school earned their high school diploma. School culture and operations, school opens on Monday, August 16, for the first full day. The last-day free summer lunch program is tomorrow, August 11. We're still encouraging everybody to get vaccinated. If you haven't been vaccinated, please consider being vaccinated. Residency has concluded. If you have not registered your student for the upcoming school year, improved your residency in the district, please contact the main office as soon as possible, like yesterday, if you haven't done that already, because the time is running out, and we'd like to get students enrolled and enter classes by the first day of school. Of the 1,203 students that went through residency, 811 had provided vaccination cards, which was 67%. I know, as of this afternoon, we received an additional 21 cards, so we probably have closer to 833. If we look at our total population, that's about 52%. Between 51 and 52% of students are fully vaccinated, our staff is over 82%. So, I think we're in a good place with vaccinations, but for those of you who still have not vaccinated or have not completed a process, we had a lot of families tell us they received the first shot but not the second shot, so please continue to pursue that process, because that's the best way for us to return to business as usual at Riverside Brookfield. Freshman orientation will be held on August 11, 9 to 11 a.m., and Family Welcome Night for all students will be 4 to 6 p.m., and I believe we're also going to have a mobile vaccination unit at the family night, so that's another opportunity where families can receive the vaccine. Fall season has begun. See our Bulldog Return to Learn Plan again for more information, check the athletic website. I know the IDPH did update so that indoor athletics also need to wear masks. Outdoor athletics, as long as there's some social distancing and we're outside, you do not have to wear a mask, but please check the athletic website for specific information. And I think that summarizes Dr. Freitas's principal report.
So, in the, the 67% is two weeks post?
Yeah, 67% is the cards collected, so that means completed cards collected of the students who participated in three residency, so out of 1,200, 811 had completed vaccination cards.
So, we're hopeful that number's going to go up, because you said some people said.
It's already gone up to 833 as of today.
They're in process of getting their second vaccination.
Correct.
Okay, great.
So, we're in a really good spot, both for families, our staff for sure, we're over 80%, and students, we're continuing to collect more information, but we're over 50%. Claire?
How does that data compare to like that of the surrounding communities? Is that higher for the students, slower? Do you have any idea?
I don't know if other high schools are collecting that or what process they're using, but there's not, there's not a public database available where you can check other schools' information. That's a good question.
For this Family Welcome Night, is this the first, is this a new initiative?
It is. It's a new initiative to try to, because we weren't able to do some of the things where, you know, with incoming eighth graders, about activity night and opportunities, it's an opportunity for parents to walk their schedule with their kids. Coaches and sponsors will be available to try to help encourage kids to get involved in extracurricular.
How are we communicating that out?
I believe they've been, it's on our website as well as through our social media outlets, Instagram, Facebook.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. We talked about at the special committee, you know, connecting with people in the building, and this is, this is the beginning of that connection, right?
So, one of the, one of the things that we've been working on is, as soon as something goes out, like, so like that Return to Learn Plan, we've been trying to do shorter messages and just sending out a link. We've seen, based on our traffic on Facebook, Instagram seems to be the primary source where a lot of our students find information, and a lot of our parents are on Facebook. So, we have, we have started the trend now since June, when we started discussing this. Whenever we post something, we're trying to keep that message short, like, you know, in early July, when they came out and said, "If you're vaccinated, you don't need to wear masks," we put that on the website, we took that short little blurb, and we put that out on Instagram, Facebook, you know, with vaccination, you know, how to get vaccinated. Then when they updated the guidelines, we did the same thing, so I'm assuming that's the same way all of these informations being shared, as well as the students also have the Remind app.
Are we also sending it through an email through the skyward, right? So, it's also in addition, being emailed?
So, if you look at up the top of Hector's report, it said via phone blast, e-blast, social media, and website. Claire, Elena, would that, does, am I accurate in students get most of their stuff from Instagram and parents more Facebook, or is there a different venue we should be looking at to get information out quicker? You guys as seniors probably have access to Remind as well?
Yes, I would say that that's pretty accurate. I get my, most of my information for the school announcements on Instagram, Remind, and through email.
Yeah, I think that the shorter, more, like, short and sweet messages are definitely helpful, because especially with the mask guidance, like, when it changed to no mask for fully vaccinated people, just seeing that as a graphic and that being everywhere kind of reminds you, and then when it changed back, the graphic is easier than a long-winded email explaining why. I think people just follow that.
Okay.
That's helpful, thank you. Any more questions? Anyone? Anybody? Moving on to the consent agenda. Any discussion on this, or can we go ahead and make the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, no. I was still looking around to see if anyone had any, any feedback on this. Trying to see what we have.
It's also right on the packet, if you want to just read.
Which one?
Consent agenda.
Oh, okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meeting held on July 13, 2021, and August 3, 2021, open and closed, as presented in the August 10, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. This is an, I need a second, and this is an all-in-favor.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, moving on to old business. Action items, life safety, capital improvement, sustainability.
No update? Kristin, the railings are almost complete, and so that's the only summer project, and the electric chargers have been installed, we're now working on.
The wiring.
The wiring.
And are those electric chargers for anyone who wants to use them, or for the driver's ed cars?
They're both. We have two for future driver's ed cars, and then we have two that will be available to students once they are completely set up.
Thank you. Tentative budget, I don't think we have any updates there, do we?
A minor update, I used the June 30 actuals to make changes in in-line items throughout the budget, which as a result increased the projected surplus, and I summarized some of the changes. The biggest changes were really shifting money around, because that created all of the new account numbers to align to the federal grants, and so created those accounts and moved things over. We also had an accurate number for evidence-based funding, and so I updated the budget with that, as well as local revenue based off of fiscal year 21 actuals, and then decreasing some expenditures based off of actual staff that we've hired, as well as adjusting benefits based off of not only staffing changes, but IMRF rates for calendar year 2022 and THIS rates.
Any questions on that? We don't have any action tonight on the tentative budget, but I'm looking around as we. Okay, moving on to the Press Policy, Press Plus, excuse me, Policy Issue 107. Okay, moving on to the Press Policy, Press Plus, excuse me, Policy Issue 107.
We updated the policies, and those are included in your board packet. I did not receive any comments or questions. We updated the mission statement. We accepted all the minor changes and suggestions presented from the Press Plus service. I'd like to offer an opportunity, Ms. Towner or Ms. Ruska, is there anything that I'm leaving out?
No.
I think the changes kind of speak for themselves. I don't think there were anything...
It was pretty straightforward. I didn't think there was anything controversial or...
No, all minor, just very minor dates.
Yeah, the green is changes from the Press Service. If you see a blue highlight, that's a change from the committee. So a lot of times it's dropping in the word superintendent or designate, minor things like that. Like I said, we, the biggest one was probably updating our new mission statement in the policy manual.
One question I had, not related to these specifically, but with the policies, do we need to update with these, the student board members into the policy? I have it on a Post-it note somewhere, if you could look into it. I think there, I believe there is language we would add. Should it be the will of the policy committee?
Do you have a specific policy that it would go under, or...
I just know I was looking at alternative policies as we were kind of going through this vacancy to see what people had out there, and I stumbled on it on a couple of boards. I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but it was one of those things I meant to mention for future discussion, if, next time you review it.
So I know when we entertained the idea of having student board members, the first year was to, kind of more to see if that fit with our...
Pilot program.
Like a pilot program. So now, you know, I think you also want to have the discussion, do you want to permanently move forward with that?
No, and that's, that would be a fair discussion. I want to say it was LT, and I can, I can pull it and look for it, and it's something I think that if you guys could just talk about, there's no urgency to it, but I think it's, it's a dialogue we should have.
Yeah, because before you change the policy, you want to make sure you're going to keep the program.
I'll look into it from...
Yeah, I wrote down LT and Lydon would be the first places I would love.
I do think that, to the, I didn't see any, not having any questions submitted or any major concerns, the board could consider taking action on this tonight if they'd like.
Is everyone open to taking action on the Press Policy Updates this evening?
Yeah, this is a second read, right?
Correct, they saw their original packet, now they saw the committee note.
Yeah, it's, it's old business.
All right, here we go. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the Press Plus Policy Issue 107 as presented in the August 10th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. I need a second, and this is all in favor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections, we can move forward. And the final issue here is just a placeholder, right? The policy six colon one eighty-five?
Yeah, placeholder.
Okay. So we can move on to new business?
Yeah, waiting for that...
Payment of bills?
More direction. Payment of bills.
No questions were submitted, correct?
Correct, correct. Okay, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the August 10th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ruska. Roll call, please.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salis?
Yes. Activity account for class of 2025. Wow.
This is a formality, every time we get a new freshman class, we need to approve, the board needs to approve their activity account so that they can start doing fundraising.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the activity account for the class of 2025 as presented in the August 10th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Ms. Salis?
Yes. And activity account for executive functioning.
As you know, one of the strategies we're implementing this year was the executive function for the students to help with their transition back to full in-person learning. We were able to secure two grants for the PTO and the RBF to help manage some of these funds. We would like to establish an activity account similar to opening an activity account for a freshman class.
So just have a question, maybe Kristin, you can, why would we want to have a special account for that? Because we have other educational or other initiatives in the past, we've never had a special account for them.
We actually do have a lot of other board account, activity accounts that were for particular purposes, and when those accounts are not used anymore, we close them. But this way, we can ensure that the grant money is spent solely on executive functioning as opposed to merging it with some other account.
So a quick question on that. So I understand executive functioning, you know, adds basics, is different colors, different folders, that's like a very basic example, but what would money, like, what are the grants going to? What is the money being spent on that's going to help executive functioning?
I don't know what they wrote the grants for and what they secured the money for, but it could go for a variety of things, whether it's materials for students who can't afford them or lost them and need other materials. It could be used for meetings and professional development. It could be used for a whole host of things. I didn't secure the grants, so I don't know exactly what they were written for.
But isn't there also S R funding for executive function? It's like training in professional development, right?
We allocated money for professional development.
So it's broader than, I guess my point is to Claire, it's broader than the folders, right? There's a lot of moving pieces that go into that initiative.
There, you guys have used RUSH, correct? Yeah, so part of it goes into teacher training to, and development and things like that, so, I mean, I can't answer for the school directly, but I know there's, there are programs out there to help get that information to teachers to get it better organized for students, so.
Okay, thank you. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the activity account for the executive functioning as presented in the August 10th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. Second. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Salis?
Yes. And last but not least, the Loyola contract.
Yeah, the Board of Education, this is, this is an agreement that we approved back in 2016, when we received some significant fundraising and did our intergovernmental agreement or contract with Loyola. Based on current, that time period has concluded, and so based on where they are at, you know, we reached out this summer to see if they'd like to continue with, at least with the annual sponsorship amount. And currently, they are not doing any sponsorship agreements due to the impacts of COVID. However, they were willing to still provide the doctors, and so kind of what we did was a fair market value amendment for two years and suspended the sponsorship part of the agreement so that we would have still physician coverage at our football games, the Bulldog Track Relay, and physician representation on our concussion management team. And in return, we'll still put them on the bottom of our program, and we'll leave their name on the scoreboard. So we tried to figure out some fair market value equivalent to what they felt, the doctors, the cost of their doctors attending those events. So no money's exchanging hands, but there is an exchange in services, advertisement for physician representation. And so I only wanted to do a two-year amendment. We did have legal counsel review this. We're waiting to hear back if there's any other changes from Loyola. So I think we'd be okay if we needed, if we waited to approve this in September. If the board wanted to approve this tonight, we should make sure the amendment includes, you know, pending final review by the superintendent and legal counsel.
Is there any urgent reason to do it tonight? Why not wait until September?
I don't know when our first home football game is.
August 27th. And so it would be before the next board meeting. I assume they would continue to provide the services if we don't have this in place. That's why I had the suggested resolution there for the board to decide how they'd like to...
You wouldn't take them off the scoreboard pending.
Correct, correct. So are we okay? I think we would be okay in September. I don't think they would not provide doctor coverage for a game.
Well, does anyone have any questions on this matter? I mean, that's where, I was, so Exhibit A and then the new Exhibit A, they look identical. So there were no changes between the two, and so it was the additional sponsorship that was different between the agreements. So all these other matters, flu shots, cardiac screening, have those been utilized in the last five years of this agreement?
We did some initial stuff in the beginning, where they had representation at residency to try to sign up parents and encourage parents to attend Loyola for their back-to-school physicals and some things like that. But we have not, we have not done the cardiac arrests or the flu shots at this point.
I mean, just something like AED training would be a helpful...
Sure.
You know...
I mean, our athletic trainer is certified in that, so he trains our staff and all our new coaches. But I think that's why we listed it here, that if there's other opportunities to work, to collaborate together, and combine services if we'd like, if they're available.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on this? Are we okay moving forward? Can I just do a straw poll here?
Okay, moving forward. I mean, just, just to have physician services is, if we had to pay it out, it would be an enormous cost, yeah.
I'm just saying, the resolution, superintendent and legal counsel, final review.
Pending final review by superintendent and...
And legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
They submitted, the draft has gone from Loyola to me and back to Loyola, so we're just waiting for them to sign the changes.
Okay, I will read the resolution then. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the contract amended, amendment with Loyola, pending final review by the superintendent and legal counsel as presented in the August 10th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Need a second.
Second.
Mr. Durkin, and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Salis?
Yes. Second opportunity for visitor statements, does anyone wish to speak? Okay. Thank you. Any discussion items requested? We had none. We'll give everyone a second chance if we wanted to bring anything up. Consideration of items for future meetings, same. And then as a board, we want to move back into closed session to complete the deliberation regarding the vacant Board of Education position.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiation, school safety, and the appointment of board member, of a board member for a vacant position.
Can we get a second?
Second. Second, Ms. Gasko.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.